Hey everybody, welcome back to Seeing 2020's YouTube channel. We have something really special for you today and this is something that kind of expands what we want to talk about on this channel. One thing that's really important, I think, is that we bring in people who have kind of put feet on the ground and moved forward with action in their communities and really helping people, you know, do what's right in regards to influencing their local elections, influencing local leaders. And so I want to bring up, we got Steve Daniels and he's a rock star. I got to meet him at an event in Cave Creek, Arizona. And we kind of just quickly passed, like walked past each other and I said, "You need to hit me up, I gotta have you on the podcast." So Steve, tell our audience a little bit about who you are, what you do, and how you would become more of a popular name online.
Yeah, thanks Adam, I appreciate you having me on. So Steve Daniels, I'm the pro temp chairman of the Patriot Party of Arizona. We formed, we're forming as a formal party in Arizona specifically to stop the rhinos. That's, that's what we do. Our mission statement is to restore and maintain constitutional conservative leadership in Arizona. That's simply it. We're not here to quote unquote divide the party. We're here to run conservative Republicans in the Republican primary, get them elected as Republicans in the general. That is the goal. But I've also been a part of Purple for Parents, which is a parents' rights and advocacy group that formed out of opposition to the Marxist Union Red for Ed movement a few years ago here in Arizona. And that group has grown to, you know, over 8,000 members here in Arizona. And we've been really the boots-on-the-ground efforts over the past number of years to stop a lot of the very divisive and abusive curriculums and, and different agendas within the schools, whether it be the critical race theory, what's now known as critical race theory, or the diversity, equity, and inclusion, whether it's the comprehensive sex ed, whatever the issue might be within, within those districts, you know, we're there to assist the parents in helping them push back because a lot of them just don't know what to do.
Man, that's a, that's a big, you have a tall order there. You have a lot to do.
Oh definitely.
So let's, let's talk about kind of what went viral a couple of weeks ago. I guess it was about a month ago now. It was down in Vale, Arizona, which is a smaller town outside of Tucson. Tell us a little bit about what happened there, how did it roll out? That video went viral, but I think the video that went viral is like a, like a moment out of the whole thing, you know?
Yeah.
You know the whole story. So tell us that whole story and let us know kind of what happened.
Yeah, so I'll try to give the 30,000-foot view. It was about an hour and a half video where I went live on Facebook. As I mentioned, you know, we've been doing this for years. I've gone to countless school board meetings across this state. One of the main misnomers or narratives that the media tried to drive is that, you know, these were outside disruptors that attended the school board meeting. While I don't have a child in that district, you know, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a property taxpayer in Arizona, and all these schools receive state funds. So anyone, anyone who lives in Arizona, in my estimation, has the right to attend these meetings and give their feedback and input. So the president of Purple for Parents, Michelle Dillard, and I would ask that everybody go on Facebook and join Purple for Parents because it's the, you know, it's the best parents' rights and advocacy group that you can be a part of. You'll get the best information on how to, you know, push back against this very harmful agenda that the schools are pushing out on the kids right now. But she called me, said, "Hey, we need to go down to Vale," which is about two hours south of us here in Phoenix. And she said, "The parents are dealing with the school board, they're acting inappropriately where they're forcing the mask on these kids," which I consider abuse at this point. It's physical abuse to mask these kids, to muzzle them. So we went down there and we simply were going to give a two-to-three-minute speech to explain to the school board they needed to stop abusing these kids, take the mask off, and allow the parents the right to choose what's best for their child. Ultimately, this comes down to parents' rights. You should not have any government entity or any private entity telling a parent how to parent their kid. That's the bottom line. So we went down there and when we arrived, unfortunately, the board saw the response from the community and the amount of parents that were there, and they decided that they just weren't going to hear from the parents. So they, they quote-unquote adjourned the meeting. We were told by the sheriff's deputies that they adjourned the meeting prior to it even starting. So as I explained to the sheriff's deputies, you cannot adjourn a meeting that has not been called to order. And then we got into a back-and-forth about open meeting law in Arizona and that they can't do that. And we actually went into the room where the school board was at the time, and they tried to keep us out of there, but we, you know, we went in because again, it's a posted meeting, open meeting in Arizona, and by law, they're supposed to have that, conduct that meeting. So we went in, spoke to a couple of the board members, the superintendent, they told us they didn't want to hear from us, they said they're, they canceled the meeting. I, you know, I had an interaction with a couple of them and at that point, after, after they walked out and the sheriff's deputies essentially kicked us out, in my case, physically, you know, put hands on me to remove me from that room. And I wasn't doing anything unlawful or creating a disturbance, I was simply sitting there and said I didn't want to leave that room until the school board listened. So I, you know, we were removed from those rooms and at that point, there was a lot of very upset, very upset parents out, outside that wanted their voices to be heard because they were sick of the abuse that their kids were being subjected to as well. So we went out there and I said, "Hey, go in there, tell the school board, you know, go in, that's your building, you, that's a publicly funded building and, and the taxpayers are the people who own it and you have the right to go in and voice your displeasure." You know, you have the right to petition your government for redress of grievance. It's, it's under, it's a part of our First Amendment in this country. So as, as all the parents decided to file into the, into the lobby at that point, one of the sheriff's deputies made a comment that the board had left and they had all quit, they had all resigned. And I thought that was very interesting. And one of the people that I work with, actually a couple of people I work with that are up, that were up in Phoenix watching the Facebook Live at that point, got me on the line and said, "Hey, according to Robert's Rules of Order, if they've, if they've left, if they've basically abandoned their post, you've got, you've got a quorum there, call a, call a meeting to order, have the parents call a meeting to order, elect a new school board." So that's what we did. The parents, they called, you know, they held a quorum, they called a meeting to order, they nominated some parents, some local, local parents to that district, and they elected five new school board members at that point. And that's, that's the portion that went viral. The entire video did get a lot of views. I think just on my Facebook alone, the entire, entire hour and a half clip was somewhere, I think it's around 75,000 views at this point. But I know that, that short clip where it shows that new school board being elected, I mean, that got millions and millions of views. I've had people contact me from so many different states around the United States, different countries. I was told somebody, a friend told me that they have a friend down in Australia that sent them the clip. So it's definitely made the circulation. Again, this was an organic event, this isn't something that you could, that we planned. We just wanted to be heard, but at that point, when we weren't being heard, we knew that we had to, we had to do something to take back power for the parents, for the people. Because that's at this point where we're at. You know, these people, these tyrannical elected officials, these people who are elected by the people are acting like tyrants at this point. And they're not listening. So at certain point, you stop asking and you just start telling them. And if they don't listen, at that point, you replace them. I'll probably butcher the quote, but you know, Thomas Jefferson said, "When a government becomes destructive of these means, you know, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, it's the right and the duty of an American to remove, remove that government and then install a new one." And he didn't say elect a new government, but they said install a new government. So it's, you know, the founders were very specific. They saw, they foresaw what could happen where our government could be hum-tyrannical to the point where they have to be removed and replaced by the people.
So that's, I mean, it did go viral. I know that the, that little section, when I saw it, it had a lot of views. And then doing some research, obviously, there's a lot of people saying, "Well, it's illegitimate, that's just, that's nothing, they, they can't remove the school board that way." Now, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't, I don't know, you know, how much is legitimate or not, but is that just downplaying kind of the magnitude of the motivation that the families had down there? I mean, isn't, even if they're, the school board isn't removed, aren't there days numbered in regards to their political careers at this point?
Yeah, I would agree. You know, you could call it symbolic in nature, you could call it ineffective, you know, some people call it that, but, but the way I look at it, regardless of this new school board takes hold and establishes legitimacy, and unfortunately, you know, you've got bad actors all across the board. There's bad actors everywhere and a lot of them infiltrate different groups. In this case, one of the new elected school board members is what I call controlled opposition, where he's actually, he and his wife are actually friends with one of the existing school board members and actually campaigned for him. So I found it very odd after the fact that, you know, they started running interference for those existing school board members that they liked and tried to delegitimize that effort. So it's unfortunate that that kind of stuff does happen. However, what it demonstrated to people all across the nation, you know, across the world even, is that when your government stops listening to the people, you replace that government. That's the bottom line. That, that's just how our country works, that's how we were founded on. And if we're going to continue as a country, if we're going to continue as a representative republic with a constitution, we have to go back to the way our country was founded. We can't continue to allow this Marxist communist movement to take hold. And I don't care who it is, I don't care who gets in our way. We're looking for every political and peaceable option possible, but we are following the blueprint that our founders gave us. They were very clear on how you take back your government.
So I got one more question, just, just because I've read a lot from the naysayers, is one of the things that I read, that it was reported that the school board was afraid because armed people were attacking them, or attacking the building. Did you guys have an armed insurrection or a militia? Are you starting a new country down there?
Uh, yeah. Uh, yeah, we're not like the free zone of Oregon or Washington or wherever they did that, you know?
Was this a violent protest or not?
Yeah, no, see, that's the thing is, there was, there was no, I saw no one armed, okay? And understand that there are laws in Arizona that prohibit firearms on, on school properties. So to my knowledge, I don't know anyone had a weapon. I personally didn't see one. I saw no violent acts, I saw no specific threats made to anyone, I saw no, you know, threats of physical safety, anything like that.
Nobody got hurt?
No, there was, I am not aware of any incident that took place. Now, I know the sheriff down there, what's interesting even enough is the sheriff and the deputies, they even made claims that there were threats made. There is no substantiation of that to this point, from my knowledge. So I feel that there's a lot of cover and lies that are being spread to shift the narrative that the school board was just afraid for their safety. And if they're afraid for their safety, you know, that's, that's probably indicative of the decision, the decision-making that they're making at this point. It does, you know, our founders, again, they said, "A government should fear the people." Because when you have the government fear the people, you have a good government. When you have the people fear the government, you've got tyranny.
I want to give Court a chance to jump in, see if he's got some questions, but...
Yeah, thanks Adam. I just want to say thanks Steve for coming on and thank you for being willing to push back and stand up. And that's kind of what we've come across now as we've been trying to spread, you know, our message from the movie was basically in medicine, that it's just been a year, a year and a half now of tyrannical government actually taking the place of science and medicine and just, you know, it's all about narrative and the, the political powers taking control versus the people. And so we really appreciate you coming on and being willing to show people how they can stand up to, you know, this unnecessary masking of our kids and this, you know, taking over of our government from whether it's a school board level or state-level government or federal, you know, it's, we've seen it on all those levels, I think, over the last year. So we're grateful to you for showing people how they can stand up. So thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. My just question was, yeah, is the, as far as the legitimacy goes, do we have any idea where that is going to stand or how it'll play out legally, you know, with the board as, as they go forward?
Yeah, it's a good question. There's a couple, a couple of the ladies that, that were elected as new school board members, they're, they're great fighters. In fact, Adam, they were, you know, they were at that event up in Cave Creek, Anastasia and Angelica, and they're, and they're awesome. We've got a couple others that are a little bit, maybe don't have as much intestinal fortitude and, and are probably a little bit swayed by that controlled opposition actor, if you will. So as far as establishing legitimacy, I'm not sure if they're gonna push, if they're gonna have the numbers, because they've got to obviously have a majority to push forward as that. I'd recommend it to them that they do try to push forward and operate as the new school board. Whether or not they do that, the parents, the, the community, they're awake and they see what took place and they're fired up. So there is a movement to remove a couple of those school board members, you know, within Arizona, there is, there is a process that you have to wait a certain amount of time when somebody is elected to school board and when they're seated to the time that they can be recalled, for example. So a couple of those members aren't even eligible to be recalled yet. That being said, from my estimation, if the school boards abdicate their throne or they are not listening to the people and they are walking away, not, not hearing what the people have to say and going virtual or simply just canceling meetings, at that point, I don't know that they're a legitimate board. I call their legitimacy into question. So then I would tell the parents in the, the local community, "Put somebody else in place and charge, start operating, start doing business, start, start operating." And ultimately, pull your kids out of the schools. I used to call them government indoctrination centers. I now call them government abuse centers. What they're doing to these kids, I consider it's criminal. I mean, they are, they're muscling and masking these kids and it is, it is literal abuse from my perspective, because they're inhibiting their ability to breathe and, and develop as children. And that's, that's a crucial time for them to be able to get oxygen, I mean, for anyone to breathe. I mean, I won't wear a mask, but it's just, to me, it's criminal. I think the parents at some point have to stop and realize and come to that realization that, look, if, if you're mad at the school district and you're mad at the school board for keeping the mask on your kids and you know it's harmful and abusive to them, at what point do you say, "Well, I'm also participating in this because I'm sending them by choice to these schools"? They have the ability to pull their kids. And I think that that's a hard conversation for some parents and a hard message for them to hear, but they've got to take some accountability at a certain point to remove their kids from these abusive environments.
Yeah, super powerful statement. And I think that motivating, I think one of the things we found from the movie was that there was a lot of people who felt a certain way about the medical, I would call it medical malpractice of politicians, right? Because it really did come down to getting doctors to commit malpractice in some ways, right?
Yeah.
That, that same kind of idea was permeated in education. And really what it comes down to is, when we do these events that we did with the movie or the event that AFLDS did with, in Cave Creek that we met at, you're looking at a place where you can look around at 300 to 2,000 or 3,000 people and say, "I'm not alone." Right? I think a lot of people, when they get started in activism, they feel like, you know, they're alone and that they're kind of going at it alone, but they're really not alone. And I want to transition that a little bit into teachers. We've had teachers at our events, we've asked specifically about masking children and their concerns, but they're also afraid because they may be the primary breadwinner in their home. They have invested in their careers. The tough thing about teachers is you end up having, that's your income, that's your social life, and because of the enormous debt that student loans incur on people, the loan forgiveness program. So not only could they lose their job, but then they also could lose all of the grant money that's given to teachers if they make payments over the course of 10 years, right? And so they're not going to get their loan forgiveness program. So now they're, they're gonna, if they lose their jobs, they're saddled with debt, they're saddled with no income, and they lose a lot of their social support. So how do we, what have you seen from teachers who are supportive of you and your movement? How do we support them? How, how does the community at large back the good teachers who want to support freedom?
It's a great question. It's a hard question because to your point, there's a lot of challenges that, that teachers face. And I'll tell you, those teachers are probably in the pretty heavy minority at this point. It's gotten so bad in the world of quote-unquote education because of the indoctrination that takes place at all levels, including the, and very much so in the universities that are pumping out these, these teachers. Communist manifesto, a part of that was to take over our, our education system in their, in our country, and they've done a great job at it. And it's, it's very unfortunate. So how do you do that? Personally, I, I think the parents, again, you know, they need to take their kids out of these abusive environments and then create a new environment that's more conducive to their child learning and being, and being healthy. And then you can provide an opportunity for a teacher, for a, for a job elsewhere. So something I've, I've been discussing with quite a few people, including AFLDS, is the ability for parents to create a co-op, homeschool co-op or a micro-school environment. I would estimate that these good teachers, the ones who are supportive of liberty and freedom and aren't a part of this Marxist movement, I would imagine they would love the chance to be able to teach in that type of environment where they're free to be able to stay and do the things that they're not currently able to do. So I think it's just maybe about reimagining the system and not, not continuing to contribute and enable the broken system that it just isn't working right now.
Yeah, Steve, I like what you're saying there because my wife and I have had that discussion and, and as you said that, you know, about the parents needing to be brave and stand up and pull their kids from school, you know, I have six kids. So we have ours still in public school and very much like you talked about, the Deer Valley, we're in the Deer Valley Unified District. And it was very much the same scenario, you know, the school board, they brought up the mask issue. I went, I went to the meeting online and I think they allowed 30 parents to speak and I think I heard 30 parents in a row talk about, you know, unmasking the kids. And then they go on and vote four to one to keep the masks.
Yeah.
You know? And so after that meeting, you know, it was like, I was just shocked because I thought, you know, how can they not listen to one?
Yeah.
You know, one, I mean, there wasn't one parent there supporting keeping masks even, you know, for their transplanted child, which maybe you could see, you know, there could be one legitimate parent that said, that has a good reason even, even that didn't happen, yet they still vote four to one. And they're, you know, the one, the one school board's con, comment was, "Oh, I think this is misrepresentation, this is the vocal minority speaking up, this is not the majority." And I thought, "Come on," you know? But then you bring that good point of, you know, is the next step is a challenging, it's a hard one, you know? That's a hard step to pull your kids from school and come up with a homeschool system or come up with a co-op. But I, I think you're right. And I think that it is too late for these good teachers because my son had one good teacher that was willing to, you know, not enforce the mask and he ended up quitting because he felt like he'd be fired if he didn't, you know? So that's where we're at.
It's very tough, it's very tough. And I'm, I'm familiar with that school district, with Deer Valley School District. In fact, the one vote that you referred to, the four to one, the losing vote, funny enough, she just stopped by my office today, we had a little chat. So I know, I know her well. It's tough for her. I mean, she is a heavy target, you know? She's, she's a minority again. So again, you're dealing with a broken system, right? And to your point, we, when I say "we," somebody needs to help the parents and provide a solution. And you've got to have those strong parents. I mean, there's, there's a lot of parents out there where, you know, the mom is a stay-at-home or the dad's a stay-at-home or they're independently wealthy to the point where they don't have to work or they can provide some flexibility in their schedule, maybe they're self-employed. They've owned businesses, they know how to start up businesses. So we need those people to step up. We need the ones that have the financial resources, the knowledge, the experience on how to start a business, because that's all this is, is just starting a little business. I've been telling people, I give the example of, you know, Ray Kroc, who is the founder of McDonald's. He wasn't in the business of selling hamburgers, he was in the business of selling how to, how to run a business effectively. He created a model that was duplicatable and replicatable and dumbed down to the point that 16-year-olds can run the business. I mean, effectively. So if we can work, you know, there's, I've been having a lot of conversations with a lot of different individuals and groups where if we can come up with a model that is duplicatable and parents can implement it at the local level and provide that, that one-room schoolhouse type option, I think that would be very powerful and it might give parents the courage or the comfort, if you will, to say, "Okay, there is, there's something else I can do versus sending my kids to this, this place." It's just, it's a scary leap for a lot of people and I get it, but it does take courage and people do need to start stepping up. Because I'll tell you this, it does not take a lot of money to bankrupt these school districts. It does not take a lot of students being removed from these, these abusive environments to bankrupt these school districts. And if we start doing that, you're going to quickly see them take a different tune. You know, we, I'm, I'm a huge proponent of a free market economy because competition breeds excellence. Now, I'm not for crony capitalism, I want to be very clear. You know, a lot of people think, "Oh, well, you're, you're just for capitalism." Well, I'm for free market economy and what we experience in this country is not necessarily that. But when you do have competition, you do see that things improve. And there's been studies done that show that there, the more private schools and the more charter schools around a public school, quote-unquote "public school," the public schools tend to, tend to actually perform better when there's the, that competitive environment. So I think we need to create that on more of a, but more of a micro, small level, a co-op level versus just recreating another flavor of what is currently out.
Yeah, Arizona has a pretty healthy charter school network. There's lots of charter schools in Arizona and they're pretty successful. And I think that's one of the things that, you know, public schools and politicians don't want to admit, right? A lot of times is that the private sector is doing it better, but it is. And when you have a good curriculum at home as well, homeschoolers tend to do pretty well. You know? And it's interesting because I had one conversation with an educator who said, "Well, you know, homeschoolers are just kids that are just like, they don't actually study, they don't actually do anything." And I was like, "Then that's not homeschool, that's dropping out of school." When kids, when parents have a curriculum and they follow it with homeschooling, they tend to test better and get into college. So, you know, there's, there's, there's options and I think we need to encourage parents and support parents in researching charter schools, researching private schools. So there's grants, there's scholarships, making that known to families that may not be able to afford that private school, that they can have the option too. I think we need to push legislation for vouchers. Vouchers would change Arizona dramatically. Give weird people of all socioeconomic classes the chance to get the education they want, you know, and make it cool to be smart again, make it cool to go to a, a school and study a specific field. If you want to go to a music school in high school, you should have the ability to take your voucher and go to a private school or a charter school that focuses on music or medicine or engineering or shop or whatever it might be. There's so many opportunities. Now, once upon a time, there used to be these high school vocational schools all over the place. And we need that workforce in America now. But I've found that our current system teaches kids that education is intelligence and education is the only way for success and you never actually get outside of the concept of education. So you listen to teachers and what were teachers? Teachers were students. And what were they before they were students? They were just children. They, you know, they went from school to school to college to grad school to school again, right? And so I, I love the idea of voucher programs and have you guys done any work in regards to like changing legislation? Give us an update on kind of what's going on in Arizona.
Yeah, that's funny, great segue because I was actually just about to touch on that. So in Arizona, we have what's called ESA or empowerment scholarship accounts. And right now, those are primarily for disabled or developmentally challenged kids. And we are huge advocates, when I say "we," it's Purple for Parents, have been huge advocates of what's called ESA for All, where the tax dollars that are currently being allocated to the school districts, which I believe is somewhere in the range of $8,000 or $9,000 per student right now, per year, that that money would follow the child. So the parent now has the ability to choose the best educational environment for their, for their kids and be able to afford that. Because to your point, it shouldn't be just the, the wealthy or the well-off that are able to provide a different environment for their kids, send them to private school. You know, a lot of people want to say that the system is rigged and it's a racist system and it's discriminatory towards the lower-income classes and they just need to dump more money into it. Well, I agree, it is discriminatory because if the lower socioeconomic classes and the, you know, certain, certain segments which struggle, which they say struggle and admittedly a lot of them do, well, if they don't have the option to go to another school, a private school, for example, because they can't afford it, the system is quote-unquote racist, if you want to look at it from that respect. But I, I don't believe in racism as, as a construct. I think the whole thing is just a, you know, it's something that's been created to try to divide people. But I do want to see better opportunity for, for certain... But I do want to see better opportunity for, for certain segments of society, mainly when it comes to economics. Them have the ability to, to put their kids in a different environment and be able to afford doing that. Because if the money follows the kids, problem solved. But, you know, the, the traditional government education system, the government schools, they don't want that because then they lose their money. That's their gravy train.
You know, if the, if the, uh, if the funding of the schools was the solution, then Detroit would be the best education city in America, you know?
There you go, there you go.
Um, so, so what kind of other legislative things have you been kind of doing in Arizona? And how can maybe places in other states replicate that, uh, action that you guys are taking?
Yeah. So, you know, the Patriot Party of Arizona, we, I, we're the party, uh, the activist party, if you will, we're the party of pressure, as we like to say, because it takes constant and consistent pressure on our, on our elected, our legislature to actually do anything. Right now, you're probably seeing that they're actually, uh, on recess until June, I think it's June 10th or something like that, or June 5th. I don't know what the date is, but 10, 10 days, I guess it's June 5th. It's, it's wholly unacceptable to me that they're taking this long of a break. But it's indicative of what's gone on this entire session where they haven't addressed election integrity. And they haven't addressed a lot of issues, you know, the, the vaccine passport that is coming at us very quickly. And that can come in different forms. It could be, you know, you have to show a card or you have to, you know, download an app, whatever that might be. There's companies right now that are telling people, you can't work here if you don't get, get this injection. I don't call it, I personally don't call it a vaccine. I don't think it's a vaccine. I think it's a poisoned injection, but. There's companies, Delta, Delta Airlines, for example, is, they've said, well, our current employees don't have to get it. But if you're going to work here in the future, you do have to get it. There's restaurants locally that have said, you have to remain masked if you're an employee unless you show proof that you've been vaccinated. Uh, and there's a lot more stories coming out day after day, you know, Fries and Kroger, Fries Kroger, massive grocery chain did the same thing. Employees have to remain masked unless they prove that they've been vaccinated. So now we're dealing with HIPAA. Again, I'm not an attorney, but now you're dealing with HIPAA issues. You're dealing with, you know, private medical records being requested by your employer. I mean, this is, this is draconian, third world type, you know, Chinese social credit score type stuff that we're starting to see come quick. So we're working to push legislation that would disallow this, that would effectively ban it. So right now we're working on HB 2190, it's House Bill 2190. And Brett Roberts is the one that put that forward. It's a, it's a striker bill, a strike-all, which means that they took a bill that was about something different, removed that language and replaced it with new language for this new issue. And both he and Senator Kelly Townsend were instrumental in helping get this put forward. Uh, both myself, along with our group and the other medical freedom groups here in Arizona, were also very instrumental in helping craft or recraft language because the initial bill was more of a boilerplate. Didn't have that greater language, didn't have a lot of protections in place that needed. So we got that better language in place. Unfortunately, when it went to the Senate Appropriations Committee, Senator Livingston would only vote to move it forward if they could amend some language. So he kind of held it hostage. Come to find out, he just delayed the process until Governor Ducey could actually put out an executive order to ban vaccine passports, quote unquote, but only from the government enforcing. And we know, you know, we know that's not what's going to happen. And we've known for the last year, I've known for the last year, that's not what's going to happen. The government doesn't have the bandwidth to be able to enforce anything like that. What they're going to do is they're going to leverage the, the corporations and the stores, the, the private businesses into doing. And we saw that with the mask mandates. You know, they threatened businesses with being fined, with being shut down, loss of license, if they did not enforce these unlawful orders. And they're essentially turning these private businesses into the, into a police force. And it's completely unacceptable. And now we have, uh, the most recent bad actor in our state, which is Senator Shope, TJ Shope out of Coolidge. He decided he was going to vote no on this HB 2190 because he didn't think the government should be involved in telling businesses how to operate. Well, for me, it's not about telling businesses how to operate. It's about not allowing businesses to tell somebody they have to inject themselves with, with a poison or with a shot in order to go shop, go to the gym, you know, go to a sporting event, an entertainment event, potentially go to work. It, it's completely unfathomable to me that we're in a day and age where they're now telling you what to put in your body in order to have a job. I mean, I just, I can't believe we've gone this far.
Yeah, I think, um, unfortunately, like many other things, you, you know, you, you mentioned some of the other things being taught in schools. Um, this is just going to create like a, just a chasm, a divide, you know? There'll be the vaxxed and the unvaxxed, there'll be the, and if critical race theory goes as far as they can, they want it to go, they will be divided by race, divided by sexuality, divided by gender. They're just going to put us in separate groups because it's easy to attack one group at a time.
You're right.
Control over them. Um, so it's, it's pretty crazy. So what, what's coming up for you? What's the next thing you guys are working on and how can people support you guys if they want to get involved? Where do they get information?
Yeah, thank you for that. So I would ask everyone to go to www.stoptherinos, it's stoptherinos, R-I-N-O-S dot com, so stoptherinos.com. Uh, please subscribe, you know, join the movement and you'll start to get updates, our calls to action. As I mentioned, we're an activist party. We, we don't sit on the sidelines. We don't just show up to the events and, and, you know, hang out at the dinners. We actually get involved, boots on the ground. Uh, we actually this past Sunday, uh, myself, along with, uh, Michelle Dillard, the president of the Purple for Parents again, and then the other medical freedom groups, we actually went out to Coolidge, a town of 40,000 in about an hour and a half from here. And we went out there because that's where TJ Shope lives, that's where Senator Shope lives. And we were like, okay, if you're going to be a bad actor, we're going to let your whole community know you're a bad actor. So we took a bunch of fly, a couple, you know, hundreds of flyers out there to his community, to his neighborhood. Uh, he owns, he, he and his family actually own an IGA, a grocery store out there. So we went and picketed out in front, on the public sidewalk, in front of his store, to let everybody know that he is voting to, to allow businesses to require people to, to inject themselves. So we create a lot of pressure, but we, his, his father was there, his father was at the store. So we went and had a conversation with his father and said, why is your son doing this? Why would your son want businesses to be able to require people to inject themselves to shop there, to work there? And, you know, he's like, well, I don't, I don't agree with that, but I don't know why he would do that. So, well, maybe you should tell your kid to start acting right. So we, we, we apply pressure and I will tell you, it, it was heard. I, I think, you know, Shope, Senator Shope has been now open to changing his vote potentially on that bill. Uh, it is a watered down version. It doesn't provide as much protections as, as needed. It doesn't actually protect employees. But it is, it is a step in the right direction, but we do need stronger legislation to protect all Arizonans. Because in my estimation, until all Arizonans are protected, none are protected. And that's just how I look at it. But you've got the website up there, you know, I definitely would appreciate, uh, everyone going on there, join the movement. As I mentioned, you'll get our calls to action when there's legislation that needs pressure applied. You'll get that call to action in your email. It'll say, call this, you know, call this legislator, email them. Show up, you know, we, if we have different events or rallies that we need to, to get behind, we'll show up to that. Uh, right now, we're in the process of recalling the Speaker of the House, Rusty Bowers. Uh, he's out in Legislative District 25 out in Mesa. So I would just ask that everyone, anyone and anyone that's available, that has the ability to get out to Mesa this Saturday morning at 8:00 AM, Saturday and Sunday at 8:00 AM, and we're doing this every weekend for the next three weekends. We need to get out there. We need a thousand, we need a thousand patriots, a thousand, a thousand people to go get just one page of signatures and we'll have this thing done over the next three weeks. So I would ask everyone, get out there. Uh, you can request information on our recalls tab up on the page in front of you. That's, that's our most immediate, uh, what we'll be doing next to your question is we really will be pushing on election integrity. Uh, yeah, so there's the recall tab, you know, thanks for pulling that up.
Yeah, um, and Arizona is, is, um, working on an audit right now.
We are working on an audit. We are.
And from what I understand, it's slow and, and methodical, but it's moving forward.
Yes, from what I, from what I hear, you know, I really hope there is some legitimacy to this audit. I do feel that there's been a lot of, uh, issues with the process and with chain of custody on both the machines and the ballots. I, I do hope that, you know, my, my hope is that they will uncover the fraud that actually took place. Because I know there was fraud that took place. I think most people understand that there was. So the hope being that they will uncover enough of that to where we can, we can call this election into question and actually apply enough pressure on our legislators moving forward to actually fix the problem. Because not one legislator this session has put forward a comprehensive election integrity bill that will actually fix and secure our elections moving forward. And I find that very offensive personally. I, I find it highly offensive that in this entire session, they have not actually fixed the problem. And they're making a lot of excuses. They're saying, well, it's, you know, it was the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors fault. That's, that's why it's a mess. It's like, well, it might be, that might be what happened in 2020 and prior. But what have you done to secure 2022 and 2024 and moving forward? I don't give them any room. I don't give these legislators any room. They need to fix the problems moving forward. We will apply maximum pressure until they do their jobs.
Well, hey, man, thank you so much, uh, for joining us on this podcast. Um, we appreciate everything you do. We'll keep in touch to see what you're moving forward with. Um, and to our audience, thank you guys so much for checking us out. Uh, we're going to roll out more content soon and we have, um, events that we are planning all across the country for screenings of the film, along with, um, speakers from different organizations. We're so grateful for your support. Thank you so much. We'll see you next time.
Thank you.